Public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
By Melanie. Second by Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same time. Motion approved. Um, we're gonna approve the, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items seven through nine. Which will be last month's regular meeting minutes. Um, we looked over the bills, Melanie, Christie, and I were in charge of that. Everything was in good order to me.
Mm-hmm.
So. Yeah. Okay. Move by Jordan.
Second.
Second by Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. So. We are on number nine, or we are number ten?
Ten. Yeah, one to ten.
Okay. Hearing of delegations, written communications, school patrons will be given an opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. The board will not hear personal complaints about the staff. The president will limit the speakers to a reasonable amount of time. Is there anybody here to address the board?
No. I'm positive. Never know.
Did they start early, Kevin? I'm only two minutes late.
Right on time, Lucy.
I'm ten.
He actually started a minute late. I was stalling during, hey, hurry up.
I texted Lori and she didn't respond, I know why now.
So we are on number eleven, the administration report. Administration report.
So as part of this, um, Mr. Frisby Griffin was gonna give us a demonstration or talk to us about the drones. So rather than jump into the admin report of those bills and Senate bills, which we'll do, I would suggest that we go down to his room just around the corner and he's got his drones out. And he's gonna show us some of the, uh, equipment for aviation, if you're okay with that.
Sounds good.
Good to go?
I'll wait for the other Joe.
Oh. I'll just go over a few of the legislative bills, three more days left. Right now, there's a lot of, a few of the bills that are still working out there. They get amended on one side, then they have to go back to a conference committee and see how it all plays out. So, a lot will happen the next three days on some of these bills. But, excuse me, Senate Bill 71, like I mentioned, that calls for age, that one has passed and that was signed. 1093 deals with school, bond election and primary general election. 219 is a bill that requires school districts to accept cash at events, which we already do, cash and credit both. So, that really was a Sioux Falls school issue that for whatever reason now was a state issue. So, it didn't affect us at all. HB 1092 was a bill in the year, it's when they're making cuts, but they're realizing that student teachers, especially down in Nebraska, they're paying upwards of 9,000 a semester for student teachers. So, this is a bill of $500,000 to be utilized to pay student teachers if you choose to, but no more than 5,000 per school is how I took it. So, I'm not sure in the 500 how it all works out unless you're talking to each individual school versus districts. And it could get split a number of different ways then within that school. You know, it's not necessarily 5,000, one individual could be 500, if you got $1,000 as a student teacher. So, that did go through. 1068 was more of a Douglas type thing, I believe, it's to allow military decorations at school graduation. The bus safety one, seems like it should have been a simple one, but it actually had a little bit of an uphill battle at times. And all that was is if you have exterior cameras on your bus and someone runs the flashing lights in the stop arm or you let kids off, you could use that video to show what happened. Well, you legally can't right now. This was to make it so it was legal to use it, and yet some still didn't like it. And, a school that brought this forward had a lot of issues with it. We had one just last week, I know, that we were dealing with. But it didn't mandate that you had to have these cameras. So, it wasn't an unfunded mandate, it's just if you have them and it happens, that is admissible evidence, okay? And that's just me waiting for the governor to sign. Some that are still obviously in the hopper. 1039, to repeal the national board certification, that's been amended so that it will cover those that already have the certification. They just won't take anybody new on after July 1. And I think I still have another hurdle to go, but I'm quite sure that's how that will end up. 1040 is the subsidizing for dual credit, changing that from 33% of what the student parent paid to now 50%. It's still a good deal, it's not as good a deal as it was. It's about a $900,000 estimated cost savings to the state, which means it's 900,000 more to parents. If they want to do that, but again, 50-50, it's still, it's a good program. 1239 was the bill dealing with libraries and librarians being held criminally liable. That was amended today. And, the criminal piece that was taken out, basically it's what's in place, but it added on after it went through the process that your school has, went through the soup, the recommendation, and then through the board. After the board, it could be appealed to a court, is basically what it did. So, and that then did pass 32 to 2, but that means it has to vote, but it was amended, so it's got to go back over to the House, or excuse me, to the, yeah, to the House side. This was in the Senate today, on the conference committee to decide if they're going to agree with the amendment, or if they want to make a change, if they don't make a change, that's got to go back to the Senate side. So, should be interesting.
Just to clarify a question.
Yep.
What's the rationale for doing this? And, because I don't recall librarians being criminals.
No, and I'm sure Melanie can speak to it as well. It has to do with a handful of books that they don't feel should be in schools, should be in city libraries, should be whatever. Our name got mentioned again today, which we don't have the book. It's taken on circulation, I think, a year or two ago. It's just that some they feel should only be listed for adults. And, again, I don't think that anybody's arguing some of that. We had it come before us a year ago, two different books. We eliminated one and we kept one, after the committees went through and read them and, yeah. You said agreed, that one, no. So, we have our process in place, but again, that has to go to a Senate, or to a conference committee now to see where it goes from there. Senate Bill 6 was simply money for the Douglas School District with the growth, with the new bomber coming. It's sort of a slippery slope, because it's, originally it was going to be just to give money, now it's going to be the loan, was the amendment, I believe. But there are a lot of other schools that can come up with another reason why they need help or whatever. Now, this is a unique situation, because it's, because of the bomber and how much they're going to grow. But, it's from the federal side, maybe they should have more, a little more skin in the game too. Their stance is there, doing with schools and law. Well, you maybe need to. So, we'll see where that, but that one did pass, so, excuse me, it's on the governor's desk. Or, it will move to the governor's desk next. The sparsity bill, Senate Bill 78, just modifies the sparsity. Deals with, I think, 12 schools in the state. There's like 18 or 20 some that actually get sparsity. And that just means the sparsity factor is because you're X amount of miles from the next school and your school size. You know, if you're 70 miles from the next school, you're not going to consolidate. So, it's a sparsity factor. The thing is, it was put in place, I think, in 2011, 13, whatever it was, but it's never been adjusted. So, basically they just had this to adjust the amount up a little bit. I think they adjusted it up to 137,000 was the max in additional sparsity. And that one, like I say, it was such a minor thing, but for those schools, it was a major thing.
What is the next number of miles on that?
I don't know what the miles is off the top of my head, if it's within, you know.
Yeah, just give us a range, like what would you throw up at ballpark?
Well, East River, I think there's only maybe one or two schools that qualify for sparsity. They're all West River for the most part.
So, it'd have to be more than 30 miles?
Probably 30 to 40 miles. I, again, I don't, I can look it up and find you that, but I don't know off the top of my head. Never had to deal with sparsity side of it, so. The final, the final budget, general budget bill will be Senate Bill 189, once we get to that point on Thursday at some point. Senate Bill 191 is a property tax bill, that goes to, that'll be on the floor. There's about three different property tax bills floating around up there today. One, today got amended to include the 5% sales tax, and that one went down. The governor's bill, Senate Bill 216, is still out there. So, they're all still trying to figure out which one to try and agree on, and I don't know if something will happen this session or not, because each side has got a lot of different thoughts on what should happen right now. So, we'll see the next few days, the 1.25, we're not hearing anything more, not hearing anything less. But again, I think a lot of that's going to come down to appropriations on the last couple of days on where that's going to end up. We'll find out then. On the building project, we've been having our weekly meetings. We're getting the drawings pretty well locked up tight, probably a week, not this week, but the next week will probably be in a position where we're in the final drawings of where the rooms, doors, all that kind of stuff sat. And then we're on pace then still to take it out to bid then in April.
This is the color palette. And we're in here from the last meeting.
So, the, the real dark one down there, carpet, that's the walk-off carpet we've been coming to the vest drill. The next carpet is the hallway carpet, right Mitch? And the next gray one to the left is the classroom. If you pull it out, there's a little bit of a room, can you see? And then the far left one is the current hallway. And then the grays down below, that's in the reception office as you walk in, the two different color laminates. Over there is the red accent, maroon accent. The tan way on the right is the cabinets for the classrooms. And then, the two different countertops. The one in front of the red there, that lighter color, that would be one of the countertops in some of the classrooms. And then the white corian there would be in the office area. And the tile, that's where I'm going to cause the bathroom, but the nurses station. They took them down and put the next carpets out there. And in some of the classrooms where the cabinets, maybe the carpet isn't getting totally replaced, it may end up having either that, a strip of that gray, or it may have, if it comes from the hallway that's got the maroon carpet already, it may be squined with a strip in front of the cabinet of that same color. And the rest then would be, when then the time comes for that carpet to be replaced, to be replaced. Moving along, good. We had a question on some drainage, they addressed that. That came up a couple weeks ago and caught the one guy off guard a little bit, but he did a good job here then this last week explaining some stuff, and he got that in here. That's all I got right now.
Well, thank you. So, now we're to item 12, approve the issuance of the 2025-2026 certified contracts.
So, what this, what we do each year is we issue next year's contracts. Everybody knows that we're hiring them back, they're issued at this current year rate. When negotiations is completed, then we issue an amendment for the amount. It doesn't replace the contract, but then the contracts are in place. That way, if somebody doesn't turn their contract back, then the oppositions will put that higher. It's also, throws that, no, their position is back to them in the next year.
And there's never any complaints about doing it that way?
You know, we've done this every, quite a while.
Yeah, I've never, I've used kind of standard operating procedure.
Yeah.
And people like to, you know, they're getting their contract and.
So, I've entertained a motion to, what's the name?
Some move.
Some move, sorry. Rule, second by Jordan. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number 13 is the executive section in accordance with South Dakota law 125-2, section 1 for personal matters. Personnel matters, not personal. The personnel matter, it might be personal, but we don't take anything personal.